Buenas tardes, señoras y señores. Este escenario público está ahora ordenado. La fecha de hoy es el lunes 10 de agosto de 2020, y el momento ahora es las 15:12. El Comité de Salud Pública, Protección Militar y Veterans, Affairs del Consejo de Guan, Infraestructura y Transit Público está ahora llevando a cabo un escenario público hoy sobre el proyecto número 240-35. Y vamos a ir con el proyecto número 300-35 después de completar el proyecto número 240-35. Para recordar, conformados con la sección 8.107 del capítulo 8, título 5, GCA, el primer aviso público fue enviado el lunes 3 de agosto de 2020 para cumplir con los requisitos de cinco días de trabajo, y el segundo escenario público, cumpliendo con el aviso de 48 horas, fue enviado el jueves 7 de agosto de 2020. Y además de estos avisos, también fue enviado a los medios y publicitado en el sitio web del Consejo de Legislación. Y me gustaría agradecer a todos ustedes, mis colegas, por asistir a este escenario. En primer lugar, déjame pasar por los reglamentos generales y conducta de este escenario. Los miembros del escenario estarán inmutados hasta que sean llamados por la presidenta. Cuando sean llamados a hablar, asegúrense de que estén inmutados y que estén hablando a través de su micrófono. Miembros del comité y del Consejo de Legislación que quieran hablar pueden indicar su deseo al presidente a través del app chat. Los testigos que testigos primero serán reconocidos por la presidenta antes de hablar, y se debe decir su nombre para los propósitos de guardia. Número 5, el orden de la cuestionamiento comenzará con el panel de senadores que completarán sus lineas de cuestionamiento para cada item respectivo en la agenda. Después de la completación de la línea de cuestionamiento del panel, la presidenta responderá preguntas. Cada miembro podrá responder una pregunta a un individuo testigo por una vez y será proporcionado otra vez si se necesita. Número 7, las preguntas y testimonios deben confinarse al sustento y naturaleza de la agenda y a las referencias personales en cuanto al carácter o al motivo de cualquier senador o cualquier individuo testigo no es permiso. Cualquier violación de esta regla general de la Comisión se retirará del escenario público por parte del presidente. Ahora empezaremos, déjame leer el proyecto y luego dejaremos que el vicepresidente empiece. El proyecto número 240-35, GCA, es un acto para añadir un 3104.1 del capítulo 3 del título 27, Reglas y Regímenes Administrativas, y una nueva sección 51104.01 del capítulo 51, título 17, Guam Code Annotated, relativo a establecer un moratorium sobre todos los requisitos de preempleo como corresponsal de la Departamento de Corregión. Y ahora daré el privilegio al vicepresidente, el senador Nelson. Gracias, gracias senador.
Gracias, senador Pito. El senador Shelton está en la sala de espera, así que se está pidiendo que se ponga a entrar al escenario Zoom. Gracias, senador Pito, por tener este escenario público para abordar los números 240-35 y 300-35. El proyecto 240-35 es un acto para añadir un 3104.1 del capítulo 3 y el título 27, Reglas y Regímenes Administrativas de Guan, y una nueva sección 51104.01 del capítulo 51 del título 17, Guam Code Annotated, relativo a establecer un moratorium sobre los requisitos de preempleo como corresponsal de la Departamento de Corregión. En los hallazgos, encontramos que la Departamento de Corregión ha estado experimentando los graves efectos de una escasez de personal en sus instalaciones, lo que ha llevado a veces horas poco convencionales y duras de trabajo para los oficiales limitados de corrección del departamento. Los administradores del departamento han enfatizado la urgencia de su necesidad de tener aproximadamente 320 oficiales de corrección para dirigir sus instalaciones en acuerdo con sus mandatos. Sin embargo, la Departamento de Corregión, en el momento en que este proyecto fue introducido, empleó aproximadamente 160 oficiales de corrección. Illicitator en más, descubre que los oficiales de corrección han tenido que ocasionalmente trabajar arriba de 24 horas seguidas y a menudo en unidades donde la relación es de 1 oficial de corrección a arriba de 50 miembros, creando un entorno de mayor riesgo en las instalaciones del departamento. El departamento, el manejo y los empleados del departamento también han manifestado sus preocupaciones sobre el aumento del riesgo a su seguridad, seguridad y bienestar como fuente de la escasez de personal. Es el intento de Illicitator en Guan de aliviar el entorno de trabajo estresado y mejorar las condiciones de seguridad para la Departamento de Corregión y mejorar la seguridad de los oficiales de corrección al establecer un moratorium sobre los requisitos de preempleo para los oficiales de corrección, lo que permitirá al departamento streamline y expedir el proceso de reclutamiento para cumplir con sus necesidades en acuerdo con sus reglas y regulaciones administrativas. Y así, solo para ser claros, esto no renuncia a la cualidad para ser certificado como oficial de paz en el territorio de Guan, pero difiere la pieza de investigación del fondo y la evaluación psicológica que se debe llevar a cabo durante el ciclo de reclutamiento. Así que usualmente, la razón por la que tarda mucho en reclutar oficiales de corrección es porque la evaluación psicológica debe ser realizada antes del propio entrenamiento. Así que para permitir al reclutador entrenar y ser probado durante ese tiempo de entrenamiento podría eventualmente ahorrar un par de dólares porque estamos juntándolo durante el entrenamiento y el recrutamiento en lugar de simplemente espaciarlo y también mejorar la tasa de reclutamiento y reducir el tiempo para poner a estos oficiales en el trabajo en la instalación de corrección donde están necesariamente. Así que gracias, señor presidente, por la oportunidad. Gracias por escuchar este proyecto. Y ahora vuelvo a usted para las deliberaciones.
Muchas gracias, senador. ¿Joel puede escucharme?
Señor director, ¿puede...?
Sí, puedo escucharte.
Gracias, Joel.
Puedo ir adelante y probar mi testimonio.
Sí, sí, Joel, vaya.
Vale, gracias. Buenas tardes, el Departamento de Corregión está en favor del proyecto 240-35, un acto para agregar el nuevo 3104.1 del capítulo 3, del título 27, Guam, Reglas y Regímenes Administrativas, y la nueva sección 51104.01 del capítulo 51, para establecer un moratorium sobre los requisitos de preempleo como oficial de corrección de la Departamento de Corregión. Estamos de acuerdo en que el proyecto 240-35 es mucho necesario y justificado basado en las circunstancias actuales de exigen, que el Departamento de Corregión está desplegado de su pobreza de personal. La urgencia y la necesidad necesaria debido al entorno de trabajo de mayor riesgo que los hombres y mujeres del Departamento de Corregión tienen y continúan a soportar ha estado en curso durante años y necesita ser abordado sin más retraso. Este proyecto pagará el camino al abordar los requisitos de preempleo estrictos en el proceso de contratación al proporcionar un moratorium sobre el actual statute, regulaciones. Esto permitirá al Departamento de Corregión contratar y incorporar un número importante de reclutadores para ampliar nuestro trabajo y hacer un impacto inmediato en las operaciones del Departamento de Corregión, incluyendo gastos de tiempo. Estamos pretendiendo incluir en este proyecto propuesto un moratorium en referencia al título 9, GCA, capítulo 90, sección 90.16, sección 6. Este, esta es la poligrafía de examinación. Ese requisito también es un tiempo consumidor y crea un retraso en el proceso de contratación. El Departamento de Corregión solicitando el día de moratorium puede ser extendido como escrito en el proyecto y hacer referencia a la página 3, línea 14, de junio 30 de 2020, que ya ha expirado a una nueva fecha de septiembre de 2021. Esto permitirá al Departamento de Corregión revisar su presupuesto y los fta's de empleo en tiempo completo vacantes y determinar cuántos oficiales de corrección, posiciones, puede contratar dentro del horario temporal basado en los requisitos de formación de la Academia de la Comunidad de Guan y de los oficiales de paz, lo que también presenta obstáculos y obstáculos. Además, debajo, he citado en mi testimonio, los comentarios y solicitudes de corrección más profundas son, 1, página 3, línea 2, empleo como oficiales de corrección reconocidos en la sección 51, 104B, 5 y 6 de los solicitudes de corrección de 51, 104B. Así que 5 se refiere a diplomas de high school o evidencia de equívoco de logro. El Departamento de Corregión recomienda amendarlo a la sección 51, 104B, que son 6 y 7. Creo que ese era el intento allí, era solo un error, si no me equivoco. Bien, 2, página 3, línea 5 y 6. El Departamento de Corregión solicita clarificación en este enmiro. Página 3, línea 13, 5 y 6 deberían leer 6 y 7 como recomendado o comentario número uno encima. Y página 3, línea 14, el Departamento de Corregión solicita cambiar la fecha de junio 30 de 2020 a septiembre 30 de 2021. También solicitamos anotar el lenguaje de "reclutador" a "corrección oficial de recrutamiento nuevo", porque eso es lo que estamos trayendo en asunto actualmente. Gracias por el oportunismo de comentar sobre el proyecto número 240-35. Su ayuda y el apoyo continuo para la Departamento de Corregión es muy apreciado. Si tienen preguntas o requieren información adicional, por favor, contáctame en 735 5170 5176. Gracias.
Gracias, Joel. Robert, el diputado director, ¿quiere hablar?
No, señor, solo apoyo plenamente en lo que el director ya había mencionado, ya hemos discutido.
Bueno, ¿qué tal el señor Agon? ¿El señor Agon tiene algo que decir?
No, señor, no tengo nada. Agradezco lo que dijo el director, su declaración anterior al comité.
Bien, con eso quiero ir adelante y volver y tener al vicepresidente a hacer su cuestionamiento y luego el resto de los senadores. Muchas gracias.
Gracias, gracias, señor, señor Carbonito, director de actuación. Gracias por señalar algunas de las preocupaciones del proyecto. Estás en la página 3, línea 5, o línea 6, que es un tipo, así que debería decir 2020, pero nos reflejarán las fechas para ser más actuales como parte de, ya sabes, un balance de mantenimiento del proyecto. Y luego la entrada de las secciones 51104 Bravo para 6 y 7, le agregaremos eso. Así que gracias por esas recomendaciones y no tengo preguntas en este momento. Gracias, señor presidente.
Bien, con eso, con eso vamos a... Senador Shelton.
Muchas gracias, señor presidente. Gracias, señor director, por tu testimonio y por todos, de tu equipo. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Solo tengo una pregunta sobre el testamento psicológico. Si puede decirnos qué porcentaje o tal vez cuántos de sus reclutadores que recibieron el testamento psicológico están realmente controlados y considerados inestables a través del test. ¿Cuál es el porcentaje?
Hasta ahora, que hemos traído, ninguno. Ninguno, no hemos tenido ningún problema con ninguno de los reclutadores que hemos traído hasta ahora.
Bien, entonces, ¿puede elaborar un poco más sobre qué es el testamento psicológico? ¿Qué exactamente estamos buscando a través de este proceso de controlación?
Creo que se indica en el statute. Solo me refiero a él.
Sí, para determinar la ausencia de condiciones mentales y emocionales. Sí, eso es algo que solo quería compartir con el público hoy para que sepamos cuán importante es el testamento, pero sabes que no lo estamos haciendo de forma completa a través de este proyecto, pero para permitirnos expedir el proceso porque entendemos cuán importante es tener oficiales de corrección de inmediato. Entendemos su necesidad en el departamento, así que muchas gracias por eso. Bien, señor presidente, eso es todo por mí.
Muchas gracias, senador. En este punto, déjame llamar al senador Tello. Senador Tello, vaya.
Gracias, señor presidente, por la oportunidad de hacer preguntas por este proyecto. Y me gustaría agradecer a todos los que están aquí hoy, por cierto, el señor Agon, por supuesto, Bob, bienvenido como siempre. Y Joel, gracias por tu testimonio. Sabes, estaba preguntando, ¿cuánto tiempo tarda el entrenamiento, por cierto? Si tenían que pasar por entrenamiento, ¿cuánto tiempo tarda?
Internamente, creo que la parte interna de ello es probablemente un mes. Y luego, si van a pasar por la academia, probablemente tardará al menos tres meses a cuatro meses.
Y dentro de ese tiempo, señor director, en los 30 días, si pasan por eso, eso es suficiente tiempo para que tomen la evaluación, la evaluación psicológica en los 30 días.
No.
¿No?
No, no es así.
Así que entonces, bien, mencionaste el entrenamiento de 30 días y luego un entrenamiento de tres meses. Así que estás diciendo que son cuatro meses en total para este entrenamiento en orden de ser correcto.
Sí, porque...
Bien, así que son cuatro meses en total. Bien.
Correcto.
Bien, así que no, estaba pensando que hay un test y entonces, bien, así que cuatro meses en total. Y en esos cuatro...
Lo siento, estoy perdiendo, estoy perdiendo el audio. Puede que esté en mi internet. Simplemente perdí completamente el audio en tu pregunta.
No, creo que su internet se froze, así que, señor presidente, creo que el senador Tai De Gui, su banda de acceso es un poco demasiado lenta ahora mismo, así que tal vez podemos volver a ella. Se despidió del llamado.
Bien, entonces, tal vez continuemos con el resto. ¿Hay alguien más que quiera hablar? Bien, déjame agregar un par de preguntas para el director aquí. Joel, hace varios meses o varias semanas hubo una reclamación que, ya sabes, los miembros estaban recibiendo comida de espumilla y hablé con usted sobre eso y creo que usted siguió y la reclamación fue algo como, diría, simplemente inventada. Y también, y también llamé al Departamento de Publicidad porque les dijeron por oficiales del Departamento de Corregión que para que ellos verificaran la comida tienen que hacer una preparación previa para ir al Departamento de Corregión y, y, y probar la comida. Así que, ¿está bien ahora?
Sí, señor, eso fue resuelto.
Bien, otra cosa, Joel, ¿cuál es la parada del programa comissario?
Es, la última vez que escuché fue en GSA, todavía está pasando por el proceso de confirmación del GSC.
Sí, déjame decir esto, que hice, escribí una carta a Claudia en GSA y incluso escribí una carta al director de administración porque GSA es el director de administración y según ellos, solo están trabajando en ello. Así que ha sido como tantos meses desde que escuchamos de ellos. Así que voy a ir adelante y hacer una parada de nuevo en eso porque, ya sabes, necesitamos hacer eso. Necesitamos trabajar en ese programa. Otra cosa que quiero decir, porque, ya sabes, el autor del proyecto, mi buen senador, vicepresidente Nelson, había mencionado moratorium, ¿verdad?, en la cosa. Dije, no sé si realmente entienden eso, pero creo que lo que estaba tratando de decirnos es que los postos fueron cayentes. ¿Estoy equivocado, senador?
Bien, hablé...
Bien. Senador Tello, vaya, vaya. Estaba haciendo mi línea de cuestionamiento y se me cortó, así que vaya, empezaremos con usted de nuevo.
Bien, lo siento, trataré de hacerlo tan rápido como sea posible. Si me corta, tendré que pasar a través de otros medios. Pero solo hay dos comentarios que quería hacer. Uno es incorporar en el Guam Code Annotated, la sección 90.16, una mínima cualidad para la Departamento de Corregión. Creo que si vamos a, el proyecto debería ser amendado en la sección Gar, la sección 9016 del Gar, que habla de una mínima cualidad para el Departamento de Corregión y lo listó hasta el número seis, tal vez también sea amendado para adelante. Other than that, el entrenamiento fue cuatro meses, es suficiente tiempo para poder proporcionar...
Creo que el senador Tai De Gui se me cortó de nuevo, señor presidente.
Bien, déjame terminar con mi línea de cuestionamiento y luego volveremos si se le ve algo. Señor director, ya sabes, escuchamos, estaba en la noticia que un oficial del Departamento de Corregión fue afectado por COVID-19. ¿Habéis hecho algún intento de realmente asegurarse de que todos los trabajadores del Departamento de Corregión, ya sabes, oficiales y civiles y administrativos y miembros estén siendo testados o han sido testados aún?
Sí, señor, acabamos de terminar el test de todos los empleados y cada empleado que tengo que salir, que fue testado el día pasado, testado negativo.
¿Qué hay de los miembros?
Los miembros y detenidos están en curso, ya está programado. Estamos coordinando, están en espera, así que eso está siendo coordinado y planes de operaciones ya han sido completados y estamos preparando para efectuar ese plan.
Bien, Joel, muchas gracias. Sean, ¿tienes algo? ¿Sean Nelson, tienes algo, señor?
Señor, no, solo estoy aquí para apoyar al Departamento de Corregión y apoyarlo. Gracias, gracias, senador.
Bien, déjame volver a Joel, solo un último item aquí. Joel, ya sabes, pasamos el proyecto para, ya sabes, el, ¿qué es eso? El, ya sabes, trabajadores temporales en...
Reserva de corrección.
La reserva.
Sí.
Y alguien me llamó el otro día y me estaba diciendo que no estaban recibiendo lo mismo que nosotros en el proyecto de seguridad pública, así que el vicepresidente está escuchando y tal vez podamos ir adelante y ver eso y hararemos otro proyecto para permitir que la reserva obtenga ese $500 por semana. Así que...
Creo que eso ya es parte del proyecto, fue pasado, señor, correcciones.
Sí, pensé que el proyecto incluye, ya sabes, los voluntarios para el Departamento de Corregión. Ya sabes, la reserva de guardia, la reserva de corregión. Pensé que lo pusimos en el proyecto que incluía al Departamento de Corregión, pero no, no estoy seguro. Ha sido varios meses ya. Así que ver si está ahí, entonces, ya sabes, no hay problema, pero si no...
¿Estás hablando de la estipenda, señor?
Porque aumentamos...
¿Una estipenda de $500?
¿Lo están obteniendo?
Está en el proyecto, así que solo necesitamos asignar la fuente de financiación para ello en nuestro presupuesto.
Así que no tienes los fondos para pagar eso.
No lo tenemos todavía porque ya tenemos la política que se ha presentado para hacerlo, pero no hay fuente de financiación que haya sido identificada todavía en el orden actual.
Así que dame una cuenta de solo realmente lo que necesitamos hacer para obtener ese dinero para el Departamento de Corregión. Bien, así que tal vez puedas darme un número de lo que necesitamos apropiar para ustedes. Bien, bien, así que, señoras y señores, si no hay más preguntas, entonces podemos cerrar. Y me gustaría agradecer a todos mis colegas por estar aquí, en esta sesión y en el escenario público para el proyecto número 240-35. Y con eso, si alguien quisiera enviar su testimonio a mi oficina, estoy ubicado en 140 Espinal Avenue, Bridge Point Building, Guan, 96910. Así que, pero peor aún, si miras eso en el sitio web, no vas a encontrar mi oficina. Así que está justo por el lado de Banguc City, el edificio azul, estoy en el segundo piso. Porque todos los que digo sobre mi correo electrónico y mi dirección fiscal, me llaman y dicen que no puedo encontrar su oficina, les digo que están a la derecha del posto, saliendo del tráfico, el segundo edificio, y estoy en el segundo piso. Bien, así que esto concluye el escenario, el escenario para el proyecto número 240-35. Y ahora procederemos con el 300-35 CR.
Gracias, señor presidente. ¿Te gustaría que yo hablara sobre el proyecto?
¿Quieres ir adelante y hacer el proyecto y hablar sobre el proyecto 335 CR en un minuto?
Sí, gracias, señor presidente. El proyecto número 30, corrección, el proyecto número 300-35 CR es un acto para amendar el título. Señor, señor presidente, y solo para el público, solo inserto el verbiage para el título como recomendado por legítimo, así que nada realmente cambió del proyecto, solo el, solo el verbiage del título para hacerlo más succincte con el intento del proyecto. Así que el proyecto número 300-35 es un acto para amendar el título, la dirección del capítulo 67, título 10, Guam Code Annotated, y para amendar la sección 67, 100, 67, 101, Alfa y Bravo, 67, 103, Foxtrot, y 67, 105.1, 67, 106, Charlie, 67, 107, y 67, 108 del capítulo 67, título 10, Guam Code Annotated, relativo a revisar el nombre del Oficio de Asuntos Veterans, creando una posición de empleo no clasificada para el director del Oficio de Asuntos Veterans de Guan, aumentando la membresía de la Comisión de Veterans de Guan, actualizando la composición y los requisitos de su membresía y permitiendo la representación máxima de veteranos en Guan debido al número aumentado de veteranos y organizaciones de veteranos en Guan. Y así, señor presidente, esto es solo un muy, este proyecto cambia muchas cosas. Teníamos durante los varios meses, comenzando el año pasado, durante unos ocho meses hemos estado trabajando con diferentes representantes de veteranos. Y realmente esperaba que hubiera muchos más veteranos aquí para proporcionar testimonio. And so really, I was hoping that there would be a lot more veterans here to provide testimony on the bill because I wanted to ensure that this is just not a a biased or or partial bill that only benefits the few. And so I'm a little bit disappointed today that the individuals that were asking for this change in our statute are not present to give oral testimony. I understand that they'll be giving written testimony, but I am open to hearing the concerns of this bill. And I will see where we can go moving forward with it, if we should do this or not, or if there are some recommendations that we can do to perhaps make this bill more amenable for the greater good. So thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for holding this hearing.
Thank you very much, Vice Speaker. The next one in line to to present his testimony, let me call up Brian Miranda. Brian, go ahead. Brian.
I don't think there's a Brian Miranda here, Mr. Chair, in the in the conference room for the Zoom. He's coming back in.
Fred, go ahead.
There you go.
Oh, I I think Brian is on. Brian, go ahead. Mister Mister Miranda, go ahead, sir. Brian, any to unmute?
Are you there?
Go ahead, Brian, I can hear. I can hear you.
Okay. I I missed most of it because I'm not feeling well, well, and I I do believe we need to go ahead and go ahead with this bill. I haven't heard all of it. I'm sorry, but I'm not feeling good.
You're you're just, we just started on this bill, Brian, Bill number three hundred, so that you are the first for the discussion.
Let me, let me pull it up. I I'm, most of the veterans are for this bill. It makes us stronger. I don't believe, I I understand some people say, oh, I should have to answer to a, you know, people that haven't been through ethics training. Well, most of us are we're all veterans and we have been through some sort of ethics training before. We don't get paid, nor do we want to get paid. And it opens it up for more veterans groups to apply for the commission.
Brian is still on?
Yeah. So I don't see what the problem is with this bill. So what's the, who's against the bill?
I I haven't heard anybody going against the bill. Brian?
Mister Miranda, are you done with your testimony?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Well, Mr. Chair, can we move on to the other individuals that are waiting to give testimony?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, let me go with Mister Bredalio. Fred, go ahead, sir.
Okay, can can you hear me? Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, uh thank you, uh Mister Chairman, Senator Pito Turlai. Thank you, Vice Speaker, Senator Talina Nelson. And Senator Amanda Shelton, is she still listening to? Anyways, thank you. My name is Fred Bredalio Junior. I'm I'm providing oral testimony and I'm from the village of Santa Rita. And I want to put on for the record, I was the former Director of Veterans Affairs. And I also want to say that the position I have for Bill three hundred dash thirty five, at this time, I'm opposing the legislation in its passage. And then I just want to provide some background information that sort of like gives the some some rational why I oppose this legislation for passage. First of all, historically, the Veterans Affairs, I mean, correction, the Veterans Commission, if you look at Bill seventeen, back in two thousand and seven, uh which was a bill that the former speaker, the late Tony Umpinko, introduced legislation to establish this veterans, this Veterans Commission. One of the things that, a part of my research, that was was on that, actually, there was part of that, it was introduced by Aaron Pinkel, the former speaker, and there was some language in there where he indicated that, and it was section sixty seven one oh seven, that the Guam Veterans Commission is hereby established, and here it is, quote unquote, in the Office of Veterans Affairs. A Guam Veterans Commission, which shall consist of five members. Now, I just need uh need you to listen to that, established in the Office of Veterans Affairs, not outside the Veterans Affairs. And this commission was supposed to be volunteers, advisor to director at that time, I believe it was Fred Golf again, as I was looking at, and the servants and advisory. So if there are any issues, the director had in regards to veterans' claims, reach out to the federal government, you know, for for the veterans, and that that Veterans Commission could be an advisory. And and it was actually, the members are volunteers. Now, I just want to say that I've been in the same situation when I was Chief of Police. I do have volunteers. It's called the Reserve Program. It's called the Community Assistance Policing Effort, the KATE Volunteers, their reserves. Now, they serve under my direction as Chief of Police. So the authority of of what it was established in the offices of Veterans Affairs, there's only one director, and he answers to the Governor Guam and and serves at the pleasure of of the Governor Guam. So the, so those those volunteers, they're not Governor Guam classified employees, they're not unclassified employees, they are just volunteers as an advisory to the director at that time, and that was Speaker Umpinko's vision, I'm assuming and speculating based on this language that was written on Bill seventeen way back in two thousand and seven. Now, what we're discussing here is Bill three hundred dash thirty five. The one provision that is really sticks out is this Federal Trust Fund, and it's on section six, six seven one oh five point one subsection D. And in there, that 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 Federal Trust Fund, those are revenues that are reimbursements for the work, the cemetery workers, and the admin staff at the Office of Veterans Affairs conduct. We have to submit reports to the you, the United States Veteran Cemetery Administration to get those reimbursements. We have to account for that. And who do we account, who who do we have to submit that to when we do the quarterly reports on that? We submitted to O P A. We even provide, we even also have the governor inform about how those funds are used. And that's accountability, because it's a natural accountability that the director, whoever sits at the ass in office, is accountable to the Governor Guam. On the, on, I want to, I want to sort of like digress to this other issue, is that during the transition report of this administration, attorney Anita Ariola discovered there were over one hundred and fifteen boards and commissions. When she, and so if you go to the the transition report of the Longarrel Tenor Administration, she was amazed, one hundred and fifteen boards and commissions. She was also amazed that when she presented her report to all the cabinet members when we're in ten, we were in attendance one time, she said that some of those boards are defunct, some members don't show up, even though they were appointed. And another thing, if you look at the O P A website, they always, they they look at the meeting minutes of these boards and commissions, especially if they're a policy board. You have to document their meeting minutes because they have policy oversight over, like, for instance, the Port Authority Board or the Airport Board. And they have to go through ethics training. Brian said they don't want ethics training, but if it's a policy board and they're gonna have some control or authority over federal funds of a Governor Guam agency, then we don't know whether it might be potential to abuse of that, abuse of federal funds. And the federal officials out there in DC, if they discover that some Veterans Commission is being mentioned of that the Governor Guam Executive Branch Agency, the Guam Veterans Affairs has to also account to this Veterans Commission, the questions will be raised, who is the, where is this Veterans Commission? What branch are they under? What authority do they have under? You know, I was taught in in public administration, there's three branches of government, right? There's the executive, there's judicial, and there's the legislative, right? And at one time, I don't know whether Brian would deny this, but I asked him, what branch do you think this Veterans Commission belongs to? And he didn't give me any answer. He didn't give me any reply. What branch of the government this commission, so are they creating sort of like a fourth branch of government? These are some of the kind of questions that I I believe should be ascertained with these, with this current leadership of the Veterans Commission. What, if you want to have accountability over this Federal Trust Fund, that's a federal funding that the, an executive branch agency has, which the governor has, or governor has oversight with, and the legislature also has an interest because they could call oversight hearings on this, about the expenditures of it, then where where what is this role of having the Veterans Commission now, this entity moving in? I, when I did some research, Hawaii has an association of different nonprofit organizations, veteran groups. They don't go to their state legislature and ask them, can you codify a law of our bylaws? Once, and I don't know whether Brian would 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 confirm this. I asked Brian, why would you want your bylaws codified? Why would you want the bylaws of this commission that are an association, technically, what I see through my observations, they're an association of nonprofit organizations, just meaning, they choose the governor's, they choose the conference room in Adeloo, or sometimes they choose the Asa Community Center for their meetings. But if you really look at it, they're they're just an association of veterans, nonprofit groups. And they're not any entity of the Governor Guam. They're just volunteers. So this is one of the thing, this is, the major issue is of that potential jeopardizing of federal funds, of that Federal Trust Fund that's that's inserted in there. Two, the more questions I believe should be, should be asked about if you're about the about the role of this Veterans Commission, because originally it was established inside the Office of Veterans Affairs. Now they appear, every single time they have a meeting, Director, you shall give us this report. Director, you should give us this finance report. They're sort of like, their conduct, in my observations, is acting as if they're a policy board. And they and they and the current leadership, they get mad. They 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 have some tempers that they raise, which is really the majority of veterans, and I would counter argue against Brian, don't like that. They don't like politics in in a Veterans Commission. They don't like seeing a director bashed or the governor bashed. And then they, at the same time, they conveniently say, oh, we don't want to be involved in politics. But they bash, have bashed me, they bash previous directors. And I've I've said that if each of these Veterans Commission, the leader, current leadership now are members of a Veterans Association, I think they got ethics there. I think the veterans of foreign wars has an ethics code. And sometimes I haven't seen that adhered to, especially when threats are made to me, that if I don't support this bill, well, it was a previous leadership, he's now relocated to Florida, it's not, would constantly be ensured that I'm out of office, you know, so I don't know what he meant by that, but that was a political threat made to me. And P and C News was filming that. I didn't see Brian come up and say, excuse me, that's that, you know, I didn't see him say, that's uncalled for. But the the main thing again is this potential jeopardy of federal funding that is really not from any work of this Veterans Commission, but the work of the staff down there at the Office of Veterans Affairs and the cemetery staff. Our burial coordinator works hand in hand with the administrative assistant, which does the finance there to ensure that everything is documented in terms of our work that we do at the cemetery, so that we get reimbursed for the for the for for those burials, you know, from the from the Veterans Cemetery Administration. And I just think there's just, I I think it's good, Vice Speaker Nelson, of the conversation about should a director be appointed and confirmed by the legislature? That that part, I think, is a good, good particular issue to to bring up. Because last I heard from the govern, from the governor at the time, she had that same sort of like thinking about creating a Department of Veterans Affairs, you know, and having a confirmation process for whoever is gonna be the next Veterans Director. But the thing is, is no, nowhere, I think, that I see, and I I don't know where the director again is gonna be, but I but I last had a sort of communication, sort of, my assume he's gonna attend this hearing and submit testimony because it is important. It's 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 important to look at what has happened with the Veterans Commission, how are they operating now? Why are they special from the other one hundred and fourteen other boards and commissions that have to go through ethics training, that have to be appointed by a governor, an oath of office? If you ask Brian, ask him, does he have any documentation of an oath of office? If you ask John Atula Titan, does he have any indication of being sworn in? You know, I think I'm I'm glad that Bill kind of is is going to be testified, because he can tell you way back, there was pictures of it, of a governor swearing and some commission members. What happened to that? That doesn't happen anymore? You know, that's the kind of thing that bothers me, is that is is Brian and the current leadership circulating and having elections? And and how are they switching seats around? When I I I witnessed that when Dan Man deal stepped down, just on the same day that Secretary Wilkie came to give an assessment of what's happening on Guam of veterans. We certainly need veterans, nonprofit groups, meeting and being engaged with Veterans Affairs Office. We certainly need that. Congress, the Congressman has his own Veterans Council. And don't, and any of those veterans that attend the Congressman Council, they have an opportunity to raise up issues to the Congressman about some of the things that the federal government isn't doing with their resources on Guam. Now, I heard on Vet Talk, one of the veterans, the current leadership of this Veterans Commission saying, well, that's the council's mission, our mission is to be on the Veterans Director, make sure he's doing his job and be, no, that's the governor's job, the governor's job. If the veterans director isn't doing anything, the governor can ask for the resignation the next following day. But you know, I tend to get requests for resignation, not from the governor, but from the same veterans commission, who think they have the authority. I think one time even Senator Talina, I think one time you were asked to submit your resignation of your, of your chairmanship one time, right? You know, these people, you know, these are some of the kind of things that I think the public is entitled to hear about these kinds, especially this important Bill 300-35 by having provisions in there that gives, that, that mandates that the director shall not only be accountable to the governor, but now has to be accountable to a commission that's not even a government entity. Switch that, let's say it wasn't the veterans commission, let's say it was another non-government entity, will I have to report? And it's not, it's, it's not to be humorous, but would I have to report to the Boy Scout Association, that's a nonprofit group, and have them inserted in there? You know, so these are the kind of questions that, that I was sort of like, I have real big concerns about this. And any, anytime that the director wants to, the director has this option right now, the director tell him, I, I don't want to speak in behalf of them. But if he wanted to gather a group of veterans, nonprofit groups, he can easily go to the governors and says, hey, let's have a meeting up here. And veterans groups, nonprofit groups who want, want to meet, can easily go up there if they want to see, what's the new briefing from the governor and his director? But it doesn't have to take codifying it into law. And then putting provisions such as this about the federal veterans trust fund, which, which station have, this commission should have no authority over. And it shouldn't slow down the process that if the director needs to get a check from the account to pay for a particular thing at the cemetery, he has to go through the veterans commission first and say, what am I spending it first, or have a double signature on it? I didn't have that problem when I was director. I could easily just go straight and cut a check, and it'll be spent on whatever the problem they need down at the cemetery. But if you put this layer of a veterans commission, that, that's sort of like a bureaucratic layer that can take place. Thank you, thank you for giving me an opportunity to testify, and I'm ready for some questions if anyone wants to ask any questions.
We'll go on with the, with those that came in to testify. So I'm gonna put place a bill last, and I'm gonna call on Sean Watson.
All right, Chairman Talia, Vice Speaker Nelson, other senators, thank you for this opportunity for me to give some oral testimony for Bill 300-35. I'm, I'm standing in support of this bill. I did not get the updated copy that the vice speaker was talking to, I got the older version of this. However, after rereading this over the weekend, I'm in, I'm in favor as it is with one small change on page three, line 21, where it says that the commission shall, at a minimum, be composed of nine members. I would suggest we change that to seven, even though we have quite a bit of the veterans organizations on Guam, a lot of them don't want to get involved with the commission itself, simply because of whatever reasons that they have, I'm not gonna speculate as to their reasons. And that's, that's what I have for this, and I like the, not to exceed the 15, and I'm gonna support the current chairman of the Guam Commission, Brian Miranda, with his agree on this bill, thank you.
So Sean, can you repeat that page three, line 21? That you want?
Yeah. It goes on, the commission which shall, at a minimum, be composed of a total of nine members, not to exceed 15. I would ask we change that to seven.
Seven members?
Yes, that would be my suggestion.
Okay, Sean, we'll work on that.
Yeah, and I'll be, I'll be online to take any questions if you so desire to ask me. Thank you.
And then we can have the senators ask their questions once we're done with Bill. Bill, go ahead, Perry. Bill, you need to unmute? You need to unmute? Okay, there we go. Okay, Perry, go ahead.
My name is Bill Kandiv, and I'm chairman of the U.S. Airport Veterans Association, and also a member of the secretary of the VA, member on minority council, representing minority veterans in this part of the world. I will tell you that I do not support Bill 3035. The bill, the title of the bill, the intent of the bill says, "Allowing maximum representation of veterans on Guam due to the increased number of veterans and veterans organization." When you write something like this, you have to justify and show the number of increases, both veterans and veteran organizations. There's nothing in here to justify this. And this part of the bill has nothing to do, the intent has nothing to do with any of the proposed changes whatsoever. Nothing. This bill, in my analysis, is a slap in the face of local veteran organizations in an attempt to eliminate their hard work and the camaraderie they've built together with their friends and families. And I hope members of the veterans organizations that these bill is being affected are listening right now. It is self-centered and not even close to being veteran-centered. It is a modern day attempt of colonization. And I will explain this in section eight of the bill. It is an attempt by a failed GBC or GVC Guam Veterans Commission leadership, failed leadership to gain more control and micromanage the Guam Veterans Affairs Office. It's an example of losing control and wanting more control. The meetings that are conducted are very toxic, resulting in my teams removing themselves from the association, I mean, from the commission and the Baragata Veterans Organization, the BVA 668 Veterans Organizations, and a member group of the Purple Heart removing themselves, not wanting to attend this organization, the meeting, because meetings are nothing but toxic. And I would, the reason why I say this again, it is a consistent toxic environment. When the VA secretary was here, when the VA secretary was here, and we had a meeting at the Adelou office, some of those members were very toxic, their behavior towards the, the VA secretary was very toxic. And it is persistent today. Leadership, the crux of this proposal is the lack of leadership skills. You've heard the testimony of the chairman of the commission. My gosh. Not even near smart whatsoever. This is a herd, H-E-R-D mentality. The crux of the proposal is lack of leadership, lack of knowledge of conducting a meeting, no negotiating skills, and a lack of a deep understanding of group behavior and personalities. Reminds me of a story I once heard, this brother was going down the street, and he wanted to know where the post office was at. And so he couldn't find it, so he went back and asked this kid by the road and said, hey, son, where is the post office? The guy, the kid said, well, go down here, turn left, and you'll find it. Well, the brother found it. And on his way back, he went back to the kid and said, you know, someday, someday, because you showed me how to get to the post office, I'll show you how to get to heaven. But the kid said, how can you tell me to get to heaven when you don't even know where the post office is at? This is what's going on. The purpose is to advise, the purpose of the commission is to advise the director on issues that are fronting our veterans. But if you look and read this bill, one thing will jump at you quickly is called control. All they want to do is control. Section six, subsection six, one of five, six, seven, one, zero, one, five, the Veteran Cemetery Fund. The GBAO director must submit an expenditure report every month to them? I believe this report is on the website. Section seven, C, they want another expenditure, quality expenditure report from the director. Section seven, meeting, they want to control who can be an ex-official member when, in the law now, there is an ex-official member, so they want to control that. In their bylaws, their bylaws are very controlling. Everything's controlling. So let me look at this, section eight, and tell you why it's a, it's a colonized, entitled mentality, a herd mentality. Here's hereby establish a Guam Veterans Commission which shall, at a minimum, be composed of a total of nine members, not to exceed 15 members, to include the following representation, then this is the kicker. One member from each of the congressionally, congressionally, and nationally chartered organization, off-island organization. Should more than one chapter, i.e. VFW, maybe they have two or three organizations of these organizations exist on Guam, each shall be entitled to a, listen to this, each shall be entitled to a member of whom shall be representative, representative of a veteran, veterans or retired social for each brand of the U.S. Air Force, of U.S. Air Force, to consist of U.S. Army Association, Air Force Retiree, and all these organizations. If one of these guys, there are two of them, they want to take over these organizations. This is micro-management, and this is hogwash. That is the crux, because they cannot control, they, they don't know how to conduct meetings. Very important that they understand group behavior. You understand meeting leadership. You understand how to deal with harsh personalities like the veterans have. Very much important to understand group leadership. You go to their different organizations, and you understand the mentality of that organization. You take those mentalities, bring them over to the commission when they cover a meeting, and harness the energy, harness their energy, and know how to negotiate to get what you want. When I was chairman of the commission for four years, I kept a log of every issue that was brought up. And we discussed those issues, and you've seen through my writings in the paper, that we have resolved hunting issues. We didn't argue, I didn't argue with the director, we worked together, we worked together with Hawaii leadership. And we resolved many things, and guess what? Because of the good members of the, of the commission when I was running it, we had a law passed by the VA. You know what the law is? Every veteran now can go downtown to FHP and the clinic in Manila to get free urgent care services, free urgent care services. You know why? Because we studied the problems they were having when they were getting, were having problems getting appointments because they weren't a priority. So we, we stacked all those numbers up, I wrote the recommendation, we brought it from Guam, Honolulu passed it, and President Trump signed it in 2018. So it's all about leadership, it has nothing to do with anything else. If you don't know how to conduct leadership, if, I mean, sorry, if you don't know how to conduct a meeting, better step down and get the hell out of the way, because you're causing a lot of problems. Look at what happened to four organizations that quit that commission. When I was chairman, I never had a problem. Not once did I have a problem. And guess what? I always had a quorum, and the community participation was overwhelming. You know why? Their environment was participative, their environment was soft, and every member, we listened to what they have to say, and I didn't resolve all those problems, they resolved it themselves. That's a smart leadership. And so I opposed this thing, I don't know what the heck they're trying to do, they're trying to take over. This, this charter organization is wanting to take over. And you know that number seven or the number nine? If you look at the numbers of the VFWs here, the Veterans for Foreign Wars or American Legion, if you look at them, watch the numbers, because they're about seven. They want to take over. And, and, and it's, it's a bad thing, because you, what you're gonna do, you're gonna have chaos among the veterans. You're, you're taking what they've built and throwing it down the tubes. Is this what we want? No, we're having a, we're having a tough time right now bringing up the confidence of our veterans. So we don't need this extra herd mentality to bring that, to bring their morale down. We need, we need a lot of work. We do need a lot of work. And, and I hope that all the veterans are listening to this testimony, I hope that they look at section eight of this testimony, of this bill, and, and if this bill passed, bam, we got a problem. Thank you.
Bill, Perry, thank you. I just wanna tell the panel that we have work. Bill, thank you for your insight, because we have always shared some of the things that we need to do to kind of invigorate the, the issues with, with, with the veterans. And at this point in time, I want to start off with our vice speaker to, for her line of questioning. Go ahead, vice speaker, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. I want to thank everyone that came and gave testimony today. You know, I myself was, I'm very appreciative of Mr. Bedalia and Mr. Kandiv coming and giving testimony, because I myself wanted to understand into the weeds the impact of this bill. Because in, in, just upon the surface, it looks like we're broadening like opportunity for other veteran organizations to be a part of something larger. But thank you for explaining really what the impact of this bill would be. Thank you for helping us to see another dynamic that is going on within our veterans community. So perhaps maybe, is there any recommendations that you may have for us as a body? You know, this term, I've been getting a lot of veterans from different nonprofits coming here and feeling that, that the legislature or the, we're not supporting the veterans initiatives and, and supporting their needs. And so do you have any recommendations on how we can move forward as a community together to really help our veterans in a very transparent way, in a, in a, in a collaborative way and not trying to dominate one over the other?
Well, yes. The first of all is to leave the system like it is right now, leave it alone. And if you want to change, like Mr. Bedalia indicated, appoint commission, appoint advisors to the commission, advisors that are, are, are straight, advisors that are, are, they don't have to be very knowledgeable, straight, and, and they understand how leadership and management work, and that they are, number one, they gotta be veteran-centered. That's the first one. The second thing is that there's got to be a collaborative effort with everybody that is involved with working to ensure that veterans are taken care of. For example, and I brought this up several months, a couple of years ago to leaders. It's a good idea, but it never went through. I thought it was a great idea, is you get the people who work for the veterans, for example, the CBAC, the Veteran Clinic. You get all the veteran organizations that are working to ensure veterans are taken care of. Make them be part of this commission. Make them be part of, I need director for GVAO, perhaps the Chairman of the Commission, or from the legislative side, and a couple others, whose all sole thing is to bring this knowledge together and resolve the issues that we have. Now, I have resolved so many things, I can't even remember what they are. It all has to do with collaboration, working with people, and the importance of working with the people in Hawaii. And when we work together from this small group that are knowledgeable what's going on, we can resolve a lot of things without even going to the VA in Washington DC. My job there is to assist the Secretary, look at policies that are against minorities. I resolved one when I went there, and so I'm looking at a couple more that are against our minorities. So leave it alone. Have this collaborative group here consisting of all organizations within the VA to be part of this group, because they would know what is going on. To have members from the community, from the Veterans Affairs, from everybody, and don't make it like fifteen or twenty. Just enough to be able to resolve some of our issues. And I have used this system, and it works. For an example, for many years, we've been having problems with appointments of our veterans. I've stumped this until now. Now it's resolved by every veteran who's being referred, for example, to a naval hospital, would have to report to a center there in the hospital that will ensure that their appointments are online, and that when they're finished, that they're done, and then back to the VA. That now is working. We've had, for the longest time, we have, for the longest time, we've been, we have been cheated, I would say, by VA policies that were not researched properly. For an example, for the longest time, when we sent our veterans and their escort to Honolulu, when the veterans go to into Trippler, the escort has to find another place and stay and cost three, four, five hundred dollars a night. Well, I found in the wreckage, and that was wrong. We fixed it. What also we found was that they were giving veterans twenty dollars a day to have, I mean, food voucher. I went to Honolulu myself, on my own. I took twenty dollars, went to the cafeteria to ensure that twenty dollars is enough. Well, if you just want to die, twenty dollars is enough. But now, we have changed that. We found that also another policy was wrong. When now our people go, the veteran and escort to Honolulu now, guess what? They can spend fifty-two dollars and some cents, or fifty-nine dollars and some cents, per day, per day. And so that when they get home, they can finally get all their money back. These are the collaborative things that when we form this group, we can resolve a lot of problems. So again, further, so that's my two cents. And well, it's nothing I can do, but who gets selected to the position of Chairman of the Veterans Commission? But I wish that in this administration's VA IDIC or EVA policy that they want to do is they wanted to have a VA and a VA agency. And I hope that they go on and do that. That will resolve a lot of issues also. So that's my two cents. Working together, working with the senators, whoever, get involved. But I know there's a lot of people come to your office and complain of a lot of things. And I have nothing against my fellow veterans. A lot of these people are not knowledgeable of even their issues that they're being faced. So they're going to expecting you to resolve the issue. That's not fair. Anyway, thank you. That's what I have.
Dr. Sismasipuri, and now I guess Senator Shelton is gone? So.
Baddalia has something to say.
Yes. You know, thank you, Vice Speaker Nelson, you know, for, you know, I mean, some suggestions, you know? Because what was amazing is when I assumed the Veterans Office Director on that transition report that Anita Ariol had with the one hundred and fifteen boards and commissions, the Guam Veterans Commission was never mentioned. So it was like, they didn't know, you know, I mean, the Transition Committee didn't know there was a Veterans Commission, because they weren't even mentioned out of that one hundred and fifteen. So what Bill's right about collaboration, you know, about the kind of leadership that's needed, you know, when they hold meetings to reduce that toxic atmosphere, because the most important issue of the veterans are really about the resources that the federal government's going to have with the nineteen billion dollars CARE Act that are going to be allocated to the different states and territories from the US Veterans Administration. And that's the conversation, you know, that when I was looking, you know, about looking as far back of the first Veterans Commission that, you know, bless his heart, Speaker Ampinko envisioned that they would be organized within the Veterans Affairs Office, and the Director would go to a room, and there would be a meeting once a month, or maybe, you know, two times out of the month. And he would say, here are the issues of veterans' claims. Here's the issues of bureaucracy of some local, you know, hiccups that I have or obstacles. And that's where, like what Bill had indicated, you know? Those are the kind of things that are in the veterans' minds. And then look what, again, like what Bill said, as a result of that, local legislation, senators go, well, we can do that from the local perspective and pass a bill to benefit the veterans. And then from the federal side, you know, that can happen if there's a collaborative team approach to looking at the real issues of the resources that the veterans have under concern about what's happening in Hawaii, or what's happening in terms of resources that are going to be provided for our island with the issues of, we have a regional, you know, VA medical clinic larger than CBAC or stuff like that, right? So, and there are other states. And I've heard, one time when I mentioned this during a Veterans Commission, there are other states, if you really look at their Veterans Affairs Office, they'll show there's a commission appointed by the governor of that state. Or sometimes they'll show no commission. I mean, an advisory council. So there's two ways to really look at it. Advisory council, a combination of volunteers. But the government, you know, I noticed that the government doesn't intrude into these nonprofit organizations and start regulating their bylaws. The government doesn't. And I would think that if the government tried to intrude into the Air Force Association, I know Bill would object to that, you know? No nonprofit organization wants the government to intrude. So why would a nonprofit group want to intrude now into a government? And how, into a government executive agency and how they operate? And that's basically what's happening with the current provisions that they have here is like what Bill said, control and authority that the current leadership are trying to intrude into an executive branch, agency function. And it's right there. It's nothing, it can't, you know, can't be hidden from that agenda. And I suspect that, and believe me, I'll, you know, like you, Senator Pito, I'm using my police investigative thing skills to see what is the agenda here? What do I suspect? As Bill had indicated, I suspect it's an attempt to have control. And, but they don't want, they want the cake and ice cream. They don't want to be sworn in. They don't want to be subjected to, if you're going to have some control like that, well, show us you, show us your board in your orientation. You know, a lot of boards and commissions, when they assume, they have to go through an orientation. What's your role on that board? You know, and training, when I had the police officer, when I had the Police Review Commission, I had to pass out to each commission member of the Police Review Commission, what were their responsibilities? Their responsibilities weren't certainly to go into Internal Affairs and start ordering people around. This current leadership have gone down to my cemetery and started, you know, going to the cemetery workers and start, you know, like making them feel like, excuse me, who's this? I'm the chairperson of the Veterans Commission, and I'm coming down here to see that you mow that grass. You know, the cemetery workers don't want that. They already have a boss. It's me, you know? They have a supervisor. You know, they don't want unity of command by lead. You know, Senator, Vice Speaker, you know, unity of command, right? One boss is the governor. Not this Veterans Commission with these provisions there. That's a violation of a unity command. Our staff need to know who do they answer to? They answer to the Director. The Director answers to the Governor, not to the Veterans Commission with this provision. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Fred.
Senator, I just got one that popped in my mind. Sorry. That is, there are two veterans places where our people go to. That is the Guam Veterans Affairs Office and the TGen Veterans Affairs Office. Now, both do the same thing. So consider, it was me, consider having everybody move up to the VA office in TGen. And that's a radical move. But they have more resources. They're closer to the VA. They can get things resolved quickly because they have the connection real fast. And maybe at the end of the day, to save money, just have our Guam Veterans Affairs Office take care of the cemetery. And let the federal guys do all the everything. Perhaps move some of our people up there, because they have, I'm not saying they have a better system, but they have a better connection with the people who approve, resolve VA problems. Thank you.
Okay, Bill, well, I'm going to be calling you, Bill, regarding, because you mentioned the cemetery, and I got some issues regarding the cemetery. So I just want to get the line of questioning from Senator tight to me. Go ahead, tell them.
I really don't have any questions, but I just wanted to thank Brian and Sean and Fred and Bill for coming on today. It's, I wanted to make sure I attended this public hearing. Sorry, I had some, I might have some Wi-Fi problems again, but I greatly appreciate your service, Fred, what you did at the Veterans Affairs Office. And just having Bill there is just a history of what's been going on and what's needed. Your recommendations and comments are, I really take to heart. And appreciate any kind of, you know, recommendations you have to as well, moving forward, maybe to make this bill better, or to, you know, maybe find something, another legislation that we can work with, to provide the concerns of Brian and Sean's comments that they made, how they feel about it. But I greatly agree about the amount of individuals from fifteen to seven, Sean, that you mentioned. You're absolutely true on that one, but there's a lot more I need to know about this bill, and I greatly appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, gentlemen, again, for your testimonies. It's important for us to hear you. Thank you.
Before we go on any further, I just would like to ask Bill, or even Fred, or even Sean, or Brian, are we ever going to get a regional office in Guam? Are we doing anything? Or do you want me to pursue that? Or, because I did pursue something like that, but as of right now, I didn't get any answers. So give me your input, and then I'll ask you something about the testimony.
Fill you in on that. When I was, my last visit to DC in December, that was an item that I brought up, and it was approved on my group to move up the chain to the Secretary. But as we review the, and became very critical of the suggestion, I had a change in mind. And the reason for that is, as I dug into the processes, as I dug into the kinds of services that our people are being given here, it is adequate. And that to build a regional VA center is a good idea. If we want to include everybody from this part of the world, which we have four thousand citizens, I'm not sure how many veterans, probably around two thousand veterans. But one thing you got to understand, there are different categories of veterans from one to eight. And it depends on where you're at in this category, because the VA provides services. If your category is seven or eight, the VA and Congress may not give you money because you're, they're not going to give you a service because you're making good enough money. So it depends on money. But we already been given all the services that we require here. And at the end of the day, if we cannot be served here, they send us to Hawaii. And so another option is to put our VA, for example, the VA clinic and get them be absorbed by the Naval Hospital, or let them be absorbed by the Guam Regional Medical Center. This is the way HICAM or Trippler is being done. They absorb our people in there, and they use their equipment and all their services, and then the VA reimburs them. I think that's a better way. And we can pursue that from this angle than building a big VA center that is not going to be well-used. For an example, we have over ten thousand veterans registered in the VA system. Only five thousand of them have registered. Actually, we have, what, twenty, thirty thousand veterans here? I'm not sure. But out of that, we only have five thousand people registered in the CBAC system. Out of those five thousand, only three thousand are being seen. Only three thousand are being seen. And if the clinic cannot help them, they're sent to different parts of the community. I traveled to Honolulu on my own. I visited every part of the Trippler to ensure that our veterans are being treated and their families are being treated properly. It's not a single veteran that I found that complained about the services they receive. They complained about other things before the services, or perhaps after the services. For an example, one of the things that we found when I went on the trip is that before, when the veteran gets out of, or prior to getting into the hospital, if that veteran needed prosthetic, they have to go Guam and get an approval for prosthetic. I resolved that problem by being there. So these are the things that, working collaboratively with all those groups that I mentioned, we can resolve. We don't need, but there's this rush to have this big hospital. Actually, maybe we don't need it, to be honest with you. We're being provided a process, but the best way, I think, that would be much more cost-effective is to absorb our VA clinic into the Naval Hospital or GRMC, and that is the same process as being done at Trippler Hospital. And they're getting all the services. And it's not, well, it's expensive, but not as much as they're running a hospital every day.
You know, I just want to bring up, remember, several months ago, we talked about the cemetery down in Bay Saganya. And that, right now, that cemetery is under protection, Rick. And the other reason why I approach about trying to place it back to the veterans, to your office, because maybe we can get federal funds for that, for the maintenance and refurbishment of that cemetery. So just, can you just give me your insight and share your thoughts about that cemetery? About where can we put it, under protection? where would, where can we put it, under Prox and Rec or under the Veterans Affairs?
Um, can I, can I, can you hear me? Can you hear me? Yes. Uh, Senator, you know, I was, I was doing a lot of research. I even met Patrick Lohan, you know, from the, the Historic Preservation Office of Prox and Rec. What had apparently happened and I, and I shared some of this information that long time ago, during the transfer of the PD Veterans Cemetery and the establishment of the Veterans Affairs Office, the, the, that Navy Cemetery, it was a Navy Cemetery right by Auto Spot. It, it actually got trans, lapsed into low and it fell under the Guam Veterans Affairs Office. And so that was, that was a long time ago. And then what we discussed, what, what was discovered is in that Navy Cemetery were German, German sailors who are World War One enemies. Now, there, there's just no way, and I mean, Bill can correct me if I'm wrong here, no way would the veterans, US veterans, a minute, a cemetery administration designate that Agania, that Agania Naval Cemetery as a veteran cemetery for funding, for, for Veterans Affairs, I mean, Veterans Administration funds that go there. Because there are German enemy sailors buried there. So what, what I had proposed to do is I talked to Patrick Lohan because prior to it being lapsed into loan, coming to our office where there are no more burials there anymore, that it'd be reverted back to Department of Prox and Rec and Historic Preservation can look at the potential federal funding. And there's a nonprofit group called the Historic Trust with my classmate, Joe Knata. He's interested in taking a look too of that situation. So a two-pronged approach, both by the Prox and Rec and the, and that trust, preservation trust, a nonprofit organization can look at that Agana Cemetery because we don't want the, you know, the erosion, the ocean coming in and it's a historic, it's been declared on the list as a historic site. When that was declared under the Speaker Juan Pat, I was looking at who went down to, to, to suggest it be indicated in the list. It was actually the park director and the Veterans Affairs Officer, the director at the time, never went to the legislature to testify. So it's like they, it wasn't planned, but I, I'm assuming that the Veterans Director at the time didn't know that they were holding a hearing on a, on a, on a, on a property that's really falls under the Veterans Affairs, right? Because he would have been down there saying, why is the park director listing one of my property as a historic? But even, even with that sort of like situation, it has been listed as a historic site. And there, there can be potential federal funds on historic sites. And it's part of the Agania Historic Trail to that, that Naval Cemetery. Besides German prisoners of war, there are actually even some individuals who are interned at that Agana Cemetery that never served in the military and some serve in the military or a spouse of military or not a spouse of, of a military. It was just like what the Navy did at the time, just, you know, designate the area to, to intern people there, right?
Well, my only concern for that, my only concern, I don't, I don't care who owns it.
Yeah.
Doesn't matter to me, is that we clean it every time we turn around. Because we do have legitimate veterans down there. My friend Frank and his brothers buried down there. So it doesn't matter. While, while this argument of who owns it or whatever, we need to continue to clean it and keep it respected. But that's very important. The other issue that's quickly came in my mind pretty soon, if we don't do anything, pretty soon the VA Cemetery down at PD is going to be full. Pretty soon, if we don't get our ducks together within the next two years and start planning for an expansion, we're gonna have a problem. Because it does not, it does not take overnight to build those condominiums there or to ask the Navy to extend or give us the backside of that VA Cemetery. So please think about that as far as, you know, are we, are we going to have a problem within two years? And the last thing is this, and this is, this is the, this is an issue. Some of our veterans, because of the lack of honor guard, are not getting the respect they deserve when they get buried. My, my party was buried there a month and a half ago, not even a single flag. Nothing. So this is very important, that every single veteran be given the honor they deserve when they die and they're buried in the VA Cemetery. If, if, then there's part of the wreck that says, if we cannot do it because COVID-19 or whatever, be, there's a thing there to, to allow other organizations or other people to volunteer and be trained as, as burial detail. This is lacking so much right now. It's pathetic. I attended another one, but three weeks ago, the same thing. There, there, nothing, no, I had to use my speaker to sound the firing squad.
At that. Okay, Bill, so I just, first off, before I, we close this public hearing, I just want to thank my colleague for joining me this, I would say this evening already. So I want to thank the Vice Speaker and I want to thank Senator Teletac, I want to thank Senator, I forgot. But anyway, I want to thank Bill, I want to thank you Fred, I want to, or Senator Shelton, I want to thank Bill, I want to thank Fred, I want to thank Sean and I want to thank Brian. And Bill, I, I, we always kind of just get together, Bill, at times and we talk about some of the things, some of the issues that, that, because I, I, I like to hear from you because you have this experience of being, being a member of the, you know, the Veterans Association with the Air Force. So I want to thank all of you for, for participating. And with that, I, I would like to thank all of you for your sharing of thoughts this afternoon on Bill number two, two four zero dash thirty-five CR and Bill number three zero zero dash thirty-five CR. And if you have any written testimony that you can, you know, can email me at senatorpito@senatorjpeterly.com or hand deliver it to my office at 140 Aspern Avenue, Bridge Point Building in Huguenau. And the time now is six forty-nine. The six forty-nine and the Community Public Safety Board of Safety of Veterans Affairs, Mayor's Council of Guam Infrastructure and Public Transit is now adjourned. And I want to thank all of you. Vice Speaker, thank you very much for joining us. Daliyo, you've always, on, on all the, the, the virtual meeting, you're always present and it shows you demonstrate your sincerity to, to being a senator. And I want to thank all of you. Thank you very much. Mr. Ryan, thank you very much. This is Massey.